Are you ready for our review of the budget?
Okay, very good. Well, thank you all for being here at More Informal Workshop. We do have the screens up on other side and we've turned, usually we turn the whole table the other way, but the people have their backs to the screen. This is also for the staff that's here that can follow along and any public that might want to attend. But these are very, very informal. Amy's going to go through the PowerPoint presentation and she's going to point out some larger policy type of items. And then what you might want to do is have your PowerPoint off to one side because she's going to be referring to certain pages in the actual document so that you can see what she means by this number changing or that number changing, what's included and what's not included. Now, you'll also note that it says unofficial draft 2019 budget. And the reason for that is because the actual proposed budget that I'm required to submit to you by law is submitted to you in, at the end of July. So as a tradition in Kerrville, we start off with early budget work sessions that are very draft in nature. And that's why it says unofficial draft. This is staff's chance to put some things before you, things that perhaps we've heard over the last few months from many of you, are things that we're aware of that need to be addressed. And we want to know, are we on the right path in terms of these items or not? And what have we missed? What would you like to see in the budget? It is balanced as it's presented, but it can change however much you'd like it to change by the time I put it up, the proposed budget out. So the idea is that the proposed budget that comes to you at the end of July reflects your hopes and desires for the budget in the following year based upon these discussions. So we'll have this work session which will cover general fund and development services fund and to some extent golf because there's some interplay between golf and general fund. And then the next time, we cover water, wastewater and hotel tax and golf and then also capital items. And so those are two informal workshops where we're really trying to get your ideas and your perspectives. Now, after today, we welcome meetings with y'all individually to talk about any questions that you might have, even drilling down into some line items if you desire. Happy to do that. Today, though, is meant to be more of that high flyover overview of what's in, what's not, and then what were you not seeing and what would you like to see?
So just make notes of things if we want to go delve deeper.
Yes, sure. Well, if it's a quick question, we'd be glad to take it. You know, on a specific item, if she's talking about some particular page where, you know, she's mentioning this change and that change, if you have a question that, right at that moment, feel free to ask it, absolutely. But we're not going to go page by page by page going through line items today. That's not what we're going to do today. Okay, with that?
All right, thank you. Okay. Let Mr. Rudy get seated. All right, thank you all for being here. And as Mark said, please feel free to ask questions as we go through. And this is intended for a little bit higher level. And if we, you know, if there are very specific questions, I am happy and available to go through those with you individually. But we'll go ahead and get started. So the presentation will be up on the screen here. And then if you want to go through it as well with your hard copy, I'm going to start on page two of the presentation with our workshop agenda for today. So basically, I want to go through a little bit of what's the calendar and process, then give you a general fund overview. We're going to talk about the five-year forecast, then some more detail on revenues and expenses. And then we're going to talk about development services individually after that. Moving on to page three, this gives you some information about what the process is because it is a very detailed, you know, prescribed by state law kind of process that we have to follow. There's not, there's really not much room for moving things around. They really have to happen on certain dates and in certain orders. One thing that I wanted to highlight, though, is that internally, our process began in February. So we've been working on this for quite a while. It's not something that we're, you know, just put together and are now showing you. We began our process with all of the departments individually giving us information about what they need. And then we have a budget committee that is Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Hoppy, Mr. Garcia and myself, meeting with each of the departments individually to go through things line item by line item. We look at business planning. We, this year, we're also looking at what was going on with the comprehensive plan, trying to dovetail all those things together as best we could, even though everything was still evolving during the spring. And we, you know, obviously go through a lot of iterations to get the budget balanced. So just wanted to make sure y'all had an overview of all that we've been doing to get to this point. So now we're at June 19th for the budget workshop on the general fund. We will have another budget workshop in July which will cover the water and sewer fund, capital projects and other funds. And then from there, we start getting into more legal deadlines. So we will get a certified tax roll from KCAD, KERCAD by the 25th of July. And then from there, we will file the proposed budget with the city secretary at the end of July. We are hoping to get a lot of input from y'all and that you'll really feel comfortable, really know what's in the budget. So once we get to that proposed budget filing, we're hoping that it will be pretty close to final. And we'd like to get all of the questions answered, priorities set, that kind of thing, before that 7/31 filing because then we really get into all of these action items that have to happen at council meetings in August and in September relating to setting the tax rate and public hearings on the budget and the tax rate and fee schedules and, you know, first and second ordinance readings. So we have to get all of those things accomplished by the last meeting in September so that on October 1st, we will have a new budget and the new fiscal year will begin. All right, moving on to page four of your slides. I wanted to give you just a brief overview of the general fund. I think most of this, you know, but just because we definitely have, you know, new people, I want to just make sure everyone understands that general fund is our largest fund. The largest departments within the general fund are police, fire, streets and all of the parks and recreation departments. General fund is primarily supported through property tax and sales tax. 61% of our revenue comes from those two sources. On the expenditure side, if you look at public safety and streets, those category of, categories of expense make up 63% of the expenditures. We have a financial policy that stipulates that we'd like to have 25% of our operating expenditures as part of the unassigned fund balance. So if, you know, if there is some big financial downturn or something like that, we have a little bit of savings. We're not cutting things too close.
Can I ask a question about that? Are we going to, if we're pulling development services out, are they still going to be part of the calculation?
Yes, yes, we still have them as part of the calculation. And I'll talk about the development services, pulling them out in just a minute because that does get into a little bit of complications on how to calculate things. So today, I'm going to focus primarily on the things that we are proposing to change or things that will be new items for fiscal year 2019. And so this presentation will reference pages in this binder that y'all should all have. And so I'll be kind of going back and forth between the presentation and the binder and showing you where to find different things there. A couple of notes about the book. We did do a system conversion of our financial system in August of 2017. At that time, we, a little bit of accounting talk, but we restructured our entire chart of accounts, renumbered everything, it was kind of a big deal. We took the opportunity to, to get into a lot more detail on many accounts that previously were kind of lumped together. For example, we had a professional services account that just kind of encompassed everything. We now have 26 different types of professional services accounts. So we know if it's consulting services or engineering services or medical billing services, lab testing services, we have those broken out into the type of professional service. So we took the opportunity to look at, okay, what are things that we, we need to know more about or we often get questions about, and we've broken those out. So for that reason, in the book, we've gone up to a little bit higher summary level on our accounts for comparison purposes. If we get down to the individual line item, it would be very confusing to see, okay, it was in this account last year, now it's split between these accounts. How do I compare? So we went up just a little bit higher of a level so that you should be able to see comparison numbers that make sense.
Do we get a more finite definition of special services too?
Yes, yeah, that's the professional services category that I was referring to. Yes, exactly, that's one that we always got a lot of questions about. Travel and training was another one we always got a lot of questions about that we've broken out into more categories, so just things like that. All right, so now I'm going to direct you to page nine of the binder. And we're going to talk about the five-year forecast. So this is something that's presented in our budget every year. We look five years out in addition to, you know, fiscal year 19. I'm going to start with looking at some fiscal year 18 items. And that is the second column over from the right where it says fiscal year 18 estimated. I'm sorry, from the left, yeah, from the left. So a few things to note, like Mr. Rudy pointed out, development services has been split out into its own fund. So we really want to have transparency around our development services area. We really want to put a focus on all of the improvements and changes that they are making over there. And we thought a good way to do that would be to break them out as their own fund. So what that means is, as far as this book goes, I have gone back and taken all the development services revenues and expenditures for 17 and 18 out and for presentation purposes, moved them over to that development services fund. So it's like they were a separate fund in 17 and 18 as well. So if these numbers on, you know, on the totals, when you're like, I didn't think that's what our total revenue budget was, well, it's, it's with the development services piece pulled out and that's why that looks different. But makes it much easier for comparison purposes when you're looking year to year. Let's see, so back to the fiscal year 18 estimated column. We are anticipating that our revenues will slightly exceed expenditures. Right now, we are looking at revenues that are going to come in below what our original budget was, primarily due to the lower than expected sales tax forecast that we've talked about several times. Then we've had some ups and downs in other line items as well. But the sales tax is the biggest piece of it. We're also expecting, though, that expenditures are going to come in below budget. And primarily, it's due to staffing vacancies. We have staffing vacancies in multiple departments, police, EMS, human resources, engineering, development services, city secretary. So we have multiple staffing vacancies. And then also, as we've seen that our revenues are coming in under budget, we've put some spending controls in place in all departments. So everyone knows that, okay, we need to, we need to see where we're going to come in revenue-wise before we can, you know, spend on some things that, that we may have the ability to wait a little bit on. What we are proposing is, you'll see down at the change in net position. So we're proposing, it looks like that we will end the balance, or in the year in a little bit positive territory, about $200,000 more revenues than expenses. We would like to do a fund balance drawdown to get us closer down to that 25% unassigned fund balance level. So we, at this point, are proposing a $900,000 fund balance drawdown. And what that means is, we would be transferring $900,000 to several different categories. One would be a transfer to the golf fund. I think y'all have heard about this previously. But currently, our golf fund is, is running in the negative. And we'd like to put them kind of, you know, back to zero and give them a, you know, fresh start for fiscal year 2019. We're going to discuss their operations in detail in July. But right now, it's looking like that would be about $200,000 that we would transfer to the golf fund to get them out of their negative cash position. We also would transfer some money to programmed asset replacement items and new capital project budgeted items. We're still working on exactly what that split would be. And that's what, another part that will be discussion, discussing in the July meeting. But those would be the other items that, that we would want to use this excess fund balance for. We're not going to, you know, bring that $900,000 to you next week or anything like that. We want to wait until a little bit closer to the end of the year to see where we actually end up. You know, as you know, things like sales tax, very volatile. So, you know, we know, we know where we are right now, but things could change drastically next month. So we'll wait till closer to the end of the year to finalize that number. But that's what we're looking at right now.
Comment on that. So this is different than what we've done in the past. In the past, it's kind of almost two different transactions and two different thought processes. Oh, we have surplus, let's move it over to asset replacement because we know we're going to have to buy a fire truck at some point or this or that or the other. What we're trying to do now is be more conscious, conscious of what we're going to be using the money for. That's why you'll see the word programmed asset replacement and capital items. So you'll see when we get to the capital discussion in July, how we would propose that we actually use that money. And that's all part of your budgeting process so that you're looking at, okay, we are intentionally transferring this much, this is how it would be used. And the beauty of doing it this way is also you don't transfer the money until you know that it's, that you're going to have it. And so it'll sit there until we know that we actually have it in hand at the year end.
Okay, can I ask a couple of questions so far of what you've gone over? One, the sales tax things. With, with what's been reported as positive in May and June, isn't it more likely that the $200,000 that we, we were talking about being shortfall could be anywhere? I mean, obviously it can be less, but isn't it likely to be substantially less?
I don't know about substantially less. I think $200,000 hopefully should be a kind of more a worst-case scenario. I'm not anticipating that it would be more than $200,000 unless things, you know, drastically change. But, yeah, like what Ms. Rudy said, so May, sales tax came in strong at 5% above May of 17. June sales tax, we just got in, and June sales tax is up 9% compared to June of 2017. So both of those are real strong showings. We're hopeful that that trend continues, but at two months doesn't really make a trend, you know? So, and we're still, you know, we're still below budget. So even through nine months of the year, we're just, just flat compared to the prior year, you know, for the first nine months of 18 compared to the first nine months of 17. And our budget was 3.6% up. So, so anyway, it's, it is possible these will come in better. It is a estimate. We wanted to be conservative with our estimates. And that was a number that we, you know, already talked about with, with council previously. So that's where we're putting it in right now.
$200,000 would have been, if we'd remained flat, right, for the entire year, right? So that is, okay. So, and then the other thing is, this drawdown that we're talking about off the fund balance, it's, is it, is it not money that we do already know we have? Because isn't it, I mean, after our CAFR, don't we know that our fund balance position was like 1.2 million above what we budgeted for at the end of 17, right?
It's true, but we don't know how we're going to end this year.
I understand, but that's, that's really where this is, bulk, the bulk of this is really coming from there.
Right, because your surplus in the current year is, at least the estimate now is just around $200,000. So the difference would be from prior years.
Right, so, so basically, though, we, we got, we got presented with a 1.2 million there. So at the end of, if we get this estimate of $200,000, we're really looking at about one and a half, right? If we hit that two?
That would be if the only difference is sales tax. I mean, there's, you know, there's other significant revenues and expenditures that we need to see how they're going to come in.
But your overall, but the overall estimate of what we've got, I mean, and I get it's an estimate, but the overall estimate of 18 is showing us to be about $200,000. That's taking into account sales tax being at this, you know, hopefully, hopefully worst-case scenario as well as staffing, which is, you know, about half a million dollars worth of staffing. So in the end, we're, we are talking about a big surplus from 17, really, right?
The majority of that transfer, yes, would be coming from 17 surplus. And to Mr. McDaniel's point, you know, we do want to show you exactly what that transfer would be used for. And that'll be part of the discussion next, next month. But we want to be intentional about we're transferring it for these specific items.
And then on to the page nine of the, the actual book, I guess, whatever we're calling it. I'm not sure if I'm reading it wrong or not, but the reason I asked about that development services pullout is I think that at least in the 17 and 18, I can't recall if 19 was it as well, where it says reserve target 25%, I think those values are based on not including the development services numbers. Whereas the, like, the, the actual 30-point whatever percent is included. So I'm, I'm not sure, but that was confusing me when I was trying.
It is confusing and I agree. And I, I'm happy to follow up, though, with the email that shows you my calculation or talking about that individually. But yes, it is confusing. And the development services is still kind of in here because basically the general fund is funding the net expenditure of development services. And so then that's part of this operating transfer line item. So, so yes, it is, it is a confusing calculation. But I'll follow up with showing you exactly how I did my calculation. Okay, and then you'll also notice we have a, a new line item called contractual commitment. And that's establishing a fund balance reserve for contractual commitments related to severance that I believe y'all have spoken about previously. Moving on to page six of the PowerPoint, but we're still on page nine of the book. A few just items to note for the fiscal year 2019 budget column. So it's kind of in the middle of the page, fiscal year 19 proposed budget, unofficial draft budget. Note that we have balanced the budget, so we have equal revenues and expenditures. We're looking at an ending reserve of 26.2%. And I'll, I'll show you that calculation as well. But that is considering development services as part of our, our reserve calculation. Development services is being split out as a separate fund as, as we talked about before. And now we're going to get into some detailed discussion on what's making up the revenues and expenditures. All right, and I guess before we get into that detailed discussion, let me say one more thing about page nine. So on the forecast out, out through 2023, just wanted to point out a few assumptions that we have. So looking out, you know, it looks like we're pretty close to being balanced in those out years. You know, these are just projections at this point that we'll obviously go through and fine-tune as we, as we go along. But we are assuming property tax to grow at 2.5% annually, 2% sales tax growth, 2.5% on other revenues, 3% on personnel and 1.5% on other expenditures. We hope that we're being conservative with our assumptions, but just wanted to let you know what, how we built that. All right, now we're moving on to a detailed discussion on the general fund revenues. So I'm on page eight of the PowerPoint presentation. And if you'll turn to page 16 in your binder, you'll see similar information. So we are proposing a total revenue budget of $27.3 million. Like I said before, property tax and sales tax contribute the largest chunk of that, 61%. The next biggest piece is service revenues. And service revenue, the biggest piece there relates to EMS. But this pie graph just helps you to graphically see where is our money coming from. All right, moving on to page nine, I'm going to talk about some of the major revenues in more detail. And we're on page 16 still in the budget binder. So looking at property tax, right now, we are assuming a 2.9% increase in taxable assessed values. So we've been working closely with KERCAD and they've been sending us preliminary tax rolls. So they have, you know, several iterations of those. The latest one that we received was on May 29th. And taxable assessed value was up 2.9%. And I have a little bit of detail breakout, but not a whole lot of detail. I do know that, that land was up 1.7% and improvements were up 4% that averaged out to that 2.9%. I don't have any information yet on new versus existing values, that kind of thing. And we are, you know, factoring in the property tax freeze into the calculations there. So they actually give us, this is what our levy would be if this was final as of May 29th. And then we can, from there, look at, okay, what percent historically do we collect of the levy and base our, our budget revenue number on that? You can see this graph showing that, that the taxable assessed value and the property tax revenue usually go real close to each other. In 17, we actually had a little bit of an increase in our collection percentage. So our revenue number was a little bit higher. And that coincided with changing back to the county collecting our, our property tax for us. 18 obviously is skewed because there was a change in the property tax rate. So we are not assuming any change in the property tax rate for fiscal year 2019. And just as a, a little bit of a benchmark, it's about $130,000 in revenue change for every penny on the tax rate. All right, moving on to...
Do you know what the effective tax rate would be this year?
I don't. We will be able to calculate the effective tax rate when we get that final property tax roll from, from KERCAD. And we'll work with, with the county to calculate that. But I do not have any information on the effective tax rate yet. Sales tax is our other big revenue source. And that's on page 10 of the PowerPoint and page 17 of your book. You know, as we've talked about many times before, this is a volatile revenue source. As far as what we are budgeting, we've, you know, looked at lots of different scenarios, lots of different analysis. And we've landed on budgeting 2.75% growth over our fiscal year 2018 estimate. You know, there's economists that are generally predicting about a 3% growth for our area. We know that we've seen some good numbers in these past two months. We know that we've seen some not-so-good numbers in other parts of fiscal year 18. One of the things that I think is interesting to note with the graph here, though, is you can see that at least dating, well, most of the years on this graph, I guess, anytime that there's been a downturn in the percentage growth, the next year has been up. So right now, we're projecting, you know, a downturn in our growth percentage for fiscal year 18. So I'm hoping that bodes well for fiscal year 19. Also, over on the right side of your PowerPoint slide there, you can see just some growth trends. You know, the, this is just actual information that's, that's come in. It's a volatile revenue source. But looking at those percentage growth numbers over there over the last 10 years, we're hoping that 2.75% is, is conservative for this volatile revenue source, but also not too conservative. Moving on to page 11 of the PowerPoint. And I'll be referring to pages 17 and 18 in your binder. And we're looking at some other revenues now. On the other revenue category, the significant changes include this budget for an additional $200,000 revenue source from the ambulance. from the ambulance supplemental payment program. We've talked about that a little bit before. Um, it is a reimbursement for unrecovered costs associated with Medicaid patients. These are actually, um, unrecovered costs related to the twenty seventeen calendar year. But it's a process to apply for this money through the state and actually get it in fiscal year nineteen. Um, this will be the first, um, time we have received this revenue. And it is something that Intermedics, our, um, medical billing provider is helping us with. It's quite a tedious application process and review process. Um, but anyway, things look good for us to, um, to receive a, a pretty good payment there. Um, we also are budgeting in some money for this oversized load escort fee, um, that y'all voted on at your last meeting. So, um, trying to, um, to be conservative with our, um, estimates there. Um, but right now, you know, uh, the police department is telling us that they have approximately five hundred loads a year that they're escorting through town. Um, we're using four hundred as our, um, estimated number of loads to calculate this fee. The part that we really don't know is, um, we're going to propose that the fee be, um, based on the load size. So there'll be a large load fee and a small load fee. And we're not sure exactly what the split is going to be between the large and the small. So we had to make some assumptions there. Um, but anyway, we do have some money programmed in. And then, um, another thing that we're looking at is, um, last year we started something called the street use fee. And this is something that, a fee that the water and sewer fund pays the general fund. Um, and it's based on a percent of the water and sewer revenues. So we started out at two percent last year. And this has to do with, um, you know, a lot of our water and sewer infrastructure is below our streets. So if there's a pipe that needs to be repaired, that oftentimes requires cutting the street and then repairing the street after the repair is made to the infrastructure. Um, so, um, we are now looking at raising that street use fee from two percent to three percent, um, which generates about a hundred and twenty-six thousand more dollars, that extra percent. And we are taking that directly to the streets paving budget, so adding that directly in. Um, and that goes along with, with discussions we've had with council about priorities around streets and twenty fifty priorities around streets. Um, we're also looking at some small fee increases at Kerrville Shriner Park and also on the solid waste per ton tipping fee. In the very back of your budget binder, you'll see some, um, fee schedule proposals. Um, I didn't give you the entire fee schedule, but I just gave you the, um, significant changes. So just the areas that we're proposing changes to on the fees. Um, on the Kerrville Shriner Park side, we're looking at about a sixty thousand dollar increase in revenue related to these fees. Um, but they're pretty small amounts. It's, it's like a two to five dollar per night or per day increase. Um, we haven't increased rates there since twenty thirteen. Um, on the solid waste side, we're just looking at an increase in the amount, um, per ton that's charged for the tipping fee. Um, I could find good fee schedule information back to two thousand nine and the rate has been the same since then. So, um, it's been a long time since, um, since that one has increased any. Republic Services, they do increase their portion each year. Um, and that's what, um, is billed to residential customers through their water bill. There's a small increase on that just about every year. Um, but this, uh, part that's the per ton tipping fee has been at eleven dollars per ton. For a very long time, we're proposing an increase to thirteen dollars per ton.
And that's at the gate?
Correct.
So she covered a lot on this one slide. Why don't we stop there?
Okay.
And just get some feedback from you all about, you know, thoughts, perceptions. Again, as I started out with, uh, today's meeting, this is draft. Um, and, you know, really this today is about getting your thoughts and, and perspectives about what's being proposed either today or over the next month.
I'm curious, I might be going back too far, but on the sales tax, can you pick a day to review what we collected that day? Such as like a baseball tournament or a music festival?
I cannot see it by day. I can just see it by month. Yeah. We do get information on a monthly basis from the comp controller. I can drill down and see a particular payer. So, you know, I can see how much did HEB pay this month, something like that. And I can also, um, look at things by category. So, you know, what is our retail category? What is our food service category? I can see things at that level, but we can't see it by the day. Same thing on the hotel, um, occupancy side. Um, they file once a month. And the comp controller really, they don't get the information on a daily basis either because it's a monthly filing with the comp controller. And you, you know, tell them your total revenues for the month and then, you know, multiply out the tax rate. And, um, that's the level of detail that the comp controller gets as well.
Okay. Go ahead. Sorry.
What's, uh, what's, I know we're looking at a drop off of our debt, uh, over the next several years. Do we have anything significant?
And then the debt side of it, um, is a, a little bit different. It's not presented here. We will talk about it in July. But on the general fund side, um, the, um, a portion of the property tax rate, um, goes to service the debt. And so that, that, um, money never even comes to the general fund. It just goes specifically to the debt service fund. And, um, let's look at exactly what the year is. Um, yeah, well, seven point three five cents out of that fifty-five, um, cent, fifty-five point one four cents goes to, um, the debt service fund. And then, um, forty-seven point seven nine cents comes to the general fund for operations. As far as, um, significant drop offs, twenty twenty-three, um, is a, is a fairly significant, um, drop off of when, um, one of our, um, obligation series, um, will be paid off at that time.
Okay.
But yes, debt is something that we'll be talking about in July and specifically around, um, capital projects as well and funding sources for capital projects. Um, but yeah, you won't see the debt side of it today. But it looks like that, um, our, we're projecting that our debt service rate, that seven point three five percent will stay the same for twenty nineteen because our debt service isn't changing much from twenty eighteen.
Amy, when you talk about, uh, for instance, the two hundred thousand dollars for golf, is the transfer, transfer from where?
So it would be, um, basically, you know, we have excess fund balance in the general fund, which means we have some excess cash there. And it would be a cash transfer from the general fund to the golf fund. And you would see it, um, as a transfer out as far as where it's reported, um, in the financial statements.
And we'll talk more about it on July, but the idea here is to make them whole, get them a fresh start, kind of hit the reset button. Then we are looking at some fee adjustments over there as well as a small increase in, uh, the subsidy. So that we can basically fix what I call a, a structural problem between revenues and expenditures. And, and in addition to that, as part of that, that whole, uh, plan is to improve the quality of the play. So, um, I think working with Scott, we've come up with a pretty good plan, but, you know, we definitely want to get your feedback, uh, when we talk about it in July.
But, um, this fiscal year nineteen budget does include, um, an eighty thousand dollar transfer to golf just as a normal operating transfer. And that would be in addition to this one-time transfer that we're looking at, um, that would be a budget amendment in fiscal year eighteen.
Because of the lag that we get in reporting the sales tax stuff, what's the last true month of sales that's kind of fall into FY eighteen?
Um, so it's a, um, two-month lag.
Okay.
Um, so in September, um, that will be July sales, um, you know, that are reflected there. Um, as far as the CAFR is concerned, we do have to do a year-end adjustment to, um, do some accrual for those months, that kind of thing, but, um, for our financial reporting purposes. Um, but the actual, um, dollars in September will be related to July.
So the CAFR readjusted, so you really did your fiscal year.
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
Sixty-day accrual.
Right. All right. Moving on to, um, page twelve, um, we're going to look at, um, transfers in. And this is also detailed on page eighteen of your binder. Um, so the biggest transfer in that we have, um, is a transfer in from the water and sewer fund. So water and sewer pays the general fund for, um, support services that the general fund provides. And as far as those support services go, um, they're listed here. Um, city council, city secretary, attorney, administration, human resources, finance, IT, parks maintenance, mowing, engineering, public works administration. So those are all things that, um, all departments that provide support to the water and sewer funds. We don't want water and sewer to have to have their own HR department. They're supported by our HR department. But we'd like water and sewer to pay for a portion of that. Um, as far as our support services fees go, um, we look at different allocation methods depending on which department. Um, and there's detail about that on page eighteen. Um, so going back to that HR example, that's kind of an easy one because it's easy to allocate those, um, expenses based on the percentage of employees in the water and sewer fund compared to total employees. Um, for other departments, we have different measures that are detailed here on page eighteen. Um, but a few things that are new in nineteen is, um, so parks maintenance, um, does mowing and landscape maintenance at, um, twenty-two well sites and one lift station and the right of way around water and sewer property. And previously, um, parks maintenance has just, um, you know, has just done that maintenance. But we're looking at actually billing the water and sewer fund for those mowing services. And parks maintenance has given us a detailed analysis of how many hours they spend on those specific items. And then we've looked at, you know, average salary rates, that kind of thing, done an allocation there. Um, there's some increases just because of some, you know, increases in costs in the general fund, but specifically in departments like engineering. We'll get into this in just a minute. But, you know, looking at adding some staff in the engineering department, so that would increase the allocation there. Um, anyway, the, there's more detail on that on page eighteen. The other transfer in that we have, uh, well, let's see. Um, we also have that two percent versus three percent, um, transfer in related to the street use fee that we just talked about. And then, um, finally, we will also have a transfer in from the hotel occupancy tax fund, um, that we'll get into more when we get to the expense side and I show you what, you know, what that's funding. But, um, but that is something new for, um, for fiscal year nineteen.
Can I ask, what is River Fest? I don't know how I've missed that.
So, um, that's a, a new event that we're contemplating, um, having in nineteen. So, you know, along with the comprehensive plan, um, you know, having these additional, um, tourism opportunities, community event things. Um, that's one that we're, um, that would be.
You're going to get to that later or?
Yes. Uh-huh. Yes. And on the expenditure side, I get a little bit more detail about, about that. All right. So moving on to page thirteen of the PowerPoint and page twenty-six of your binder, we'll get into the expenditure side of things. Um, as far as expenditures go, I think it's helpful to look at them both by category and by department. Um, by category, you can see that personnel is obviously our largest, um, category of expenditure. And then when you look at it by department, um, public safety and then streets, um, you know, are our largest departments of spending. Um, we're, uh, proposing expenditures of twenty-seven point three million. That would be, um, you know, balanced against the twenty-seven point three million in revenues. Moving on to page fourteen.
See, that, that, that's kind of the one that raises the question, the development services aspect.
Mm-hmm.
Where is that in that pie?
So, um, it is part of that non-departmental, the net that we're transferring out for development services as part of that non-departmental number.
Okay. And if you go back to page nine of our binder thing,
Mm-hmm.
um, then how does it? This is, this is where my confusion is. So how does it reconcile to, uh, I'm sorry, wrong page.
For that, um, the reserve percentage.
Well, no. So you've got FY nineteen proposed budget, twenty-seven point three expenditures.
Right.
And then down below, you've got development services, one point two million.
Right. And that's not part, well, just the net is part of that twenty-seven point three, um.
The net.
Yeah.
The difference of subsidy.
Right. So, um, development services has some revenues of their own, you know, building permits, that kind of thing. But they don't have enough revenues to cover all their expenses. So whatever the difference is, is funded by the general fund. And that net amount is in operating transfers out. But I'm thinking it, it would, um, help you if I just send you the specific calculation and I could definitely do that. Um, moving back to page fourteen of, um, the PowerPoint presentation with some more detail on pages thirty-seven to forty-three of your book. Um, we want to talk to you first about public safety because that's where one of the, um, biggest changes is being proposed for fiscal year nineteen. Um, so these are some things that, um, that we've talked about with y'all previously. Um, and we'd now put some numbers to them and have, have some ideas here. We're looking at, um, both salary and step adjustments to, um, address compression and market competitiveness on the public safety side. So, um, uh, public safety employees, um, have different pay scales than general government employees. And they all use something called a step plan. There's a separate step plan for fire and a separate step plan for police. And it's based on, um, their anniversary dates. And, you know, as they hit different anniversary dates, they move along these, um, step plans. And we had identified some issues with market competitiveness that I think y'all have, um, heard about before. And then we also identified some issues where the way our step plan worked, um, there's kind of different levels here. And you could get to the highest level of, of a lower level step and actually be making more than the beginning level of the next step up. So we wanted to address that issue and we didn't want someone to, you know, get a pay cut by being promoted, kind of idea. Um, so we had to adjust the entire step plan so that that imbalance wouldn't happen.
Did anybody actually get a pay cut?
No.
No.
No, we worked probably for three months, maybe longer with both of the chiefs to get to where we are today as, as kind of drafts. Um, and then they want to visit with the rank and file about what's being proposed over the next week and have a conversation about it.
It wasn't just pay cuts. It was also subordinates making more than the boss, more or less, right?
Yeah. That, that's the compression issue.
Okay. Explain compression and market competitiveness.
Okay.
Let me take a shot.
Go ahead.
So, um, first of all, from the market competitive standpoint, we are competing with, um, area, uh, law enforcement agencies in particular. Um, not so much on the fire side, but certainly on the police side. And that's why you have a lot of vacancies, right? Because they can go somewhere else and make more money starting out. Um, and so even, for example, the sheriff's department is paying more than we do starting out. So we have gone in and we've adjusted kind of entry level as part of also fixing compression. Um, and then, uh, we've adjusted even, um, some opportunities at the sergeant level. And so I think we're addressing that competitiveness issue, realizing of course that everybody else is probably going up at the same time. So it's, you know, chasing, chasing this, uh, this number. But I think that what we've come up with is reasonable, um, and it's something that we can hopefully afford as we've laid out here. Um, on the compression side, um, it says, Mr. Brody mentioned, as far as, um, where you've got potential of somebody that you're, uh, that's working for you is making more than you because they're at the very end of their step plan and you're at the beginning of yours at, having been promoted. So what we've done is we've gone through all those step plans for each rank and made sure we didn't have overlap between each rank. And so, uh, it means that we've had to adjust, um, the number of steps in some cases uh, and, and make some adjustments to folks in terms of what they were making. So, um, you know, we can share all that with you in detail as far as what those two step plans look, look like. Uh, you know, later this week we can send something out on that.
Okay.
So we're not looking at cuts for anyone.
No.
So we're not looking at cuts for anyone, we're looking at increases to adjust.
Yeah, I've looked at the existing step plan for in the Fire and I heard from some folks about some of the problems faced there.
It's been longstanding because what was happening is, rather than add COLAs, cost of living adjustments in the past, the city has just added more steps. And then what's happened is you've got the overlap of steps that has begun to happen from one rank to the other. And usually in Police and Fire, you do that by having fewer steps at the higher ranks. And so that's what we've done.
So as far as the fiscal year nineteen budget goes, what we're looking at for both Police and Fire is, all Police and Fire would get a two percent cost of living increase as of October first. And that doesn't matter their anniversary date or anything like that, just a two percent increase there. Then, and that amounts to about a hundred and seventy-four thousand more in the nineteen budget. Then we're looking at this restructured step plan to eliminate the compression issue. Restructuring that step plan's another hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in the budget. And then everyone that is eligible for a step increase, so the way the step increases work are every other year on your anniversary date.
Except for the first, right, step.
Okay, and the first rank step is one year? Okay, first step is one year, after that it's two years. And when you hit that anniversary date and go to the next step, that's a four percent increase that you get for going to the next step. And then those just occur throughout the year because they're based on each individual employee's anniversary date. So that's another hundred and fifty thousand for those step increases for employees that are eligible in twenty nineteen. So between all of those, we're looking at four hundred and eighty-six thousand increases on the Public Safety side to address this compression and market competitiveness issue. You can see the totals for Police and Fire. Where I list Fire here, that includes Fire, Emergency Management, Fire Marshal, and EMS altogether, all of Chief Smith's departments.
So before we leave this discussion as part of it, any feedback on what we're suggesting here?
I don't have a problem with it, but essentially with the every other year and the two, we're essentially saying they're gonna get four percent every year. Is that not what we're doing? Two percent COLA every year and then every other year you're getting, so every two years you get eight percent.
The two percent is a year-to-year thing, so we did it last year.
Oh, okay, so it's not written in stone, that's a...
Correct.
You can do that every other year.
Right, right.
Theoretically, that's what we're saying.
Well, my hope is that once we put some of these corrections in place, maybe that's not necessary every year. But it might be, given what's happening nationwide, particularly in Texas, with regard to police officer salaries. And so to remain competitive and keep our positions filled, that might be something that we, we'll take it on a year-to-year basis.
Yeah, so the four percent is more set that, you know, every time you go up a step, that's a four percent increase. But then, yeah, cost of living or adjustments like that are on a year-to-year basis.
And overall, you feel this will keep us competitive?
I think it'll, it'll, it'll help a lot. Will it solve all of our problem in that area? Probably not, they could probably still go to some of the other departments near San Antonio and make more. But, I mean, this is Curville, who doesn't want to live in Curville, right? I would ask, if y'all don't mind, if I could ask either of the chiefs to comment on what we've been talking about? You have any feedback?
I think it addresses one of the key issues that apparently we've heard on a regular basis and y'all have to open the pressure on the step problems.
So it fixes that, you know, and it helps us in the market, you know, when you look at our salaries in comparison to some of the surrounding cities.
I got a question, when people do leave Curville, are they going to the bigger cities? Or are they going to Marine, Brakesford, wherever they're using to?
Typically, what I'm seeing in the Fire Department is most of the firefighters and paramedics that we attract here, they want to be in Curville. Periodically, we'll get some that come from other areas and may stay two, three years and have a desire to go to some of the larger departments like Houston, San Antonio, Austin, Dallas. We just lost a firefighter to Fort Worth. But the bulk of what we attract in the Fire Department, you know, they come because they want to be in the Curville area.
So we're not losing so many as we're having a hard time getting someone to come here?
I typically probably lose two to three a year.
And it's different for Police.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But as quick as, on the Fire side, as quick as I lose those two or three, you know, I got four or five waiting to come back to the department.
Chief Knight, any other thoughts?
Yes, to touch on the compression issue in the Police Department, it's not as severe as it has been in the Fire Service, but it is an issue that this addresses. The other component of this in terms of the competition, if you would, between the region for police officer positions, this certainly helps us to start to address those issues. Mr. McDaniel mentioned that as an example, the Kerr County Sheriff's Office pays more starting for officers, not only officers, but our dispatch personnel. So that sort of exacerbates the issue and this actually works to address that and gets us back to a position where we're more competitive regionally with other agencies.
I was just curious, either one, would housing also be a factor at all? Just curious if, you know, location relative to job site.
Well, I think that it, I think that it comes into play when an individual employee is looking to move to this area when they come to the Police Department. As an example, if you looked within the Police Department, the officers that work with our agency, whether they're in the dispatch center or officers themselves, the overwhelming majority do not live in the city limits. Live outside of the county. Or in other communities that need in. I believe that's pretty consistent with Fire. But because of the shift fireworks, it allows firefighters to live in the prominent areas.
So maybe in the future, with our inventory increasing, that might help a little bit. Not to take away from this issue, but...
Do we do anything to recruit locals? Like maybe high school level and trying to prepare them?
We always strive to recruit local. We actually sponsor officers into the academy if they're not certified already at the time of their application. So we look to try to bring local individuals into that process, hire them and sponsor them into the academy. One of the issues that we have on the law enforcement side, and I think this is reflected not only statewide but nationally, is the difficulty in finding suitable applicants to get through the process. It's pretty difficult for us to actually come up with the numbers to actually push through and fill the jobs that we have.
So as a rule, when you lose someone and you have openings, do you have people that want, that apply, you know, for the most part?
We do have applicants, but a lot of those applicants don't make it through the background process. As an example, right now, we're getting ready to, we have, on the sworn officer side, we have four openings. This next week, we are going to be bringing two to the oral board. With any luck, those two will pass that oral board and then we'll be finishing up the background process. But that only fills half of our vacancies on the patrol side. To get to that point, we've gone through roughly ten applicants that have been weeded out at some point in time in the background process. So they never even make it to the interview board and go from there.
How long has the Junior Police Academy been going on?
This is going to be, I believe, the fifth year that we're in right now.
Be interesting to see if you eventually get some candidates out of there.
You know, we're throwing the seeds out. We're throwing the seeds out, we'll see how we go.
Yeah.
Chief and I have also talked about getting into the high schools with the high school program as well.
Okay.
Interested in seeing that.
And on the EMS side, the paramedic certification, that's something that we offer the training for as well. Chief Smith, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, that's an area where a lot of Fire Departments struggle attracting paramedics. You know, it's not just a Texas-ish problem, but it's a national problem. And we have an incentive to attract paramedics after they've completed the hiring process. There's a two thousand dollar incentive, an additional thousand after they complete six months and then an additional thousand after a year. And then the final two thousand after two years. And that's helped, you know, we've been pretty fortunate then, over the course of the last three years, we've done it really well in filling our paramedic vacancies. And, you know, we haven't had, we're not seeing a problem that most departments are seeing on a national level, a state level, in terms of attracting paramedics. But I lost one about five o'clock yesterday afternoon, so, gone to the private sector. So we have two vacancies, but I'm pretty confident we'll be able to fill those fairly quickly.
But that is a year-long process to get your paramedic certification and it only starts at certain times of the year the programs do, so that can be a little bit of a lag there.
How long is it?
One year. From the time they actually start school to complete the paramedic certification.
One of the other ideas that we've dabbled with is helping bridge the gap, actually it was our lifeguards who were, you know, in that teenage age bracket. And they go through a pretty extensive first aid training and helping them kind of bridge that gap for those that may be interested in moving towards a paramedic-type role, you know, helping them find that path. Creating that pipeline.
Well, Chief Smith, my nineteen-year-old grandson just graduated from high school and he wants to go into nursing and EMS, so maybe we can recruit him down here.
Send him to see me, we can find a spot for him if he wants to be a paramedic.
But just to point out, with this whole adjustment process, it was a pretty detailed and involved process. Kim Meismer worked very diligently on it, also looking at market competitiveness and market studies. And then the chiefs were very much involved at each step of the way as well.
Yeah, Kim did untold hours. Okay, Streets?
All right, moving on. Now we're on page fifteen of the PowerPoint and page fifty-three of the binder. And this is specifically about Streets. The thing that is changing significantly on Streets is just that paving budget piece of it. So some of you may have heard before that we were committed to having a one and a half million dollar paving budget. So that's not the entire Street Department and their personnel, that's actually like asphalt and hot mix, you know, kind of stuff. So when we had done that study a few years ago with Fugro and looked at how to maintain the Streets and what it would take and, you know, what could be done each year, that kind of thing, that contemplated a one point five million dollar paving budget each year. By taking the street use fee up to three percent, we're upping that to one point six million dollars for fiscal year nineteen. Stuart, anything you want to add on that?
Something I continue to hear is that we need to attack our streets the best we can.
Well, yeah, and that's why I went ahead and put this in here as a suggestion. We don't have to do it, we do want to rewrite our Streets again, that's coming up, is that this year?
I believe so.
Okay. So have them come through to see, okay, this is what we thought would happen and, you know, let's do a check-in and see what really happened in terms of our maintenance program and the money we've been spending. And so that's something that's programmed for this coming year. And I think we're also still continuing to play catch-up. And so that's why we've been talking some over the last year or so about the potential for issuing bonds for major street improvements beyond this operating budget money. And, but the Fugro study capped us out at one point five. That's basically because that's what we could, we thought we could afford, even though we knew we could still spend some more money and have some catching up to do. So this is what we're trying to do with the street use fee. Stuart?
Exactly what you said there, it's time to update our plan. I think it's, Fugro Plan's carried us through this point. It's established a benchmark for us. It also, over those years, we've established how much work we can actually do in-house, how much we can afford to do, or excuse me, not afford, how much manpower we have and what kind of money we can spend in that department over the years. So we've kind of got that as our baseline now. Now it's time to refine that plan, verify that we're, that the Streets are diminishing or how fast we're getting them with the new pavement management system and then implement that new strategy into citywide, so.
And that's a good point that, you know, the Street Department have found over the last few years that they don't have enough manpower to be able to spend that entire one point five million. You know, if they're working every day, all day, they can't get through all of that. So that's why they've done a significant amount of outsourcing this year. And then we'd be looking at next year, parts of it being outsourced as well to, so that we would use the entire budget.
Yes, ma'am.
I registered this complaint already, but I got elected mayor and the city redid our street right up to my property line.
Did we get too close?
And then quit. And the street guy said, no, your street there's good enough.
So the, so the way the Fugro Plan works and it's some of what we, some of the problem that we've been having with the plan is it goes from block to block. We didn't, if you go through the intersections, then you double count all the intersections. And so when we pick, when we pull all the information out of that plan, we say, well, we're gonna do this block and this block and this block and this block. Well, we're running our contractor all over town and he's charging us more for it. And so that's a symptom of what we're seeing, is little segments all over town being done. So we're gonna, we're gonna fix that in this new plan that we're proposing and say, well, let's put our contractor in one area, let him get a lot of work done in one area. You know, those have their problems too. If you're working in River Hills, somebody might say, you're spending all your money in River Hills or you're spending all your money on this side of town. So they have, it has its problems as well. But that's one thing, that's one thing that we would address in this new plan.
No, I'm actually glad they didn't break that street in front of our eyes.
That's a question we've asked, why did they pick that one block? And it wasn't the worst one in the neighborhood, so.
Good, thank you.
What would be the difficulty or reason why we wouldn't contract with the county to do some of the Streets?
The method that they use is a chip seal method and we haven't implemented that in the city. They use the tar and the gravel. It's not something that's commonly found in city streets. Some cities use it, but we haven't implemented that here.
There's some way we can, I guess, that's something I'll look into.
We'd love for them to do some cities inside the city on their own.
Do we have a ballpark on the idea of, so we're playing catch-up? Do we have a goal in mind of where we're past the catch-up and now we're just into the ongoing maintenance?
Within the Fugro Plan, we wanted to touch every street within a fifteen-year period. Now, that doesn't mean that everything got paid, but, I mean, touching the street, it was cracked ceiling, slurry seal, full depth, whatever that street method was for that piece. The budget that we gave them of a million dollars to a one point five million dollars didn't fix all the Streets to the, we got ourselves back up to about a seventy, I think, was the goal of that, was the goal of the plan. So the, where, the Streets as they diminish, it's kind of like a car. If you're gonna, if you like your car in good shape, you're gonna keep it up. But there's some point where you, where you kind of say, you know, I'm gonna just kind of let this go. We have some of those Streets that we've let go over the years and it costs so much to bring them back up to today's standards that it, we, that uses your whole budget for one street. And so we've pulled back within that, within that study and said, okay, we're not gonna spend all of our money on the most awful Streets in town. We're gonna do some maintenance along the way and keep some of the decent Streets in good shape and we'll pick up some of the bad Streets as well. And that's all addressed in there and how it, how, at the time, how Council wanted to do that and how fast they wanted to move.
That's why the sale of bonds would address the worst, you know, the full reconstruction and more overlay versus some of these more maintenance-type activities.
All right, moving on to page sixteen. I wanted to hit just a few highlights about salaries overall. This is also mentioned on page twenty-six of your binder. As we discussed on the Public Safety slide, you know, Public Safety would be getting the two percent cost of living adjustment, the step plan compression adjustment, and the regular four percent step increase depending on if they're eligible in twenty nineteen. On the general government side, we have programmed in right now a three percent average merit increase for general government employees. And then one thing that's new for fiscal year nineteen is we've budgeted a fifty thousand dollar salary vacancy savings so that we can, you know, assume that, yeah, there will be some vacancies in some departments. you know assume that yeah there would there will be some vacancies in some departments we don't know which one or where um but we're gonna budget in fifty thousand in savings assuming that will happen.
Historically this number's been larger but with us trying to address our market competitiveness and trying to get some of these positions filled you know we'd rather budget on the conservative side uh and also it's it means that we're budgeting tighter which means that we don't have a surplus at the end of the year to transfer and budget for capital uh improvements and asset replacements so we didn't want to go too far with this we wouldn't kind of have one-year experience with it and then come back to you all and say you know this is what happened and this is what we'd like to do going forward.
Yeah I've I've urged you to look at the I mean I get the tight the tightness budget you don't want to get too tight and all that but um less about a flat fee maybe more about a percentage of your so it's more like a a turnover rate than it is a a possible vacancy you know what I'm saying?
Okay yeah thank you for that feedback and yes this is something that we know you've mentioned before so I wanted to make sure that we were taking that into consideration um a little bit on the uh just benefits side um we did receive a a new rate letter from TMRS the Texas Municipal Retirement System that does our our pension um and our contribution rate so they have actuaries you know calculate how much we need to contribute based on lots of assumptions um has gone up to um ten point two four percent of um salaries um and that it was ten point one three and they do it on a calendar year so calendar year eighteen is ten point one three going up to ten point two four um what I understand from Mr. McDaniel is that um that that's a good rate compared to what other cities see.
Very good right so if it's a two to one match right so the employee contributes contributes seven percent theoretically that number should be fourteen percent but because of interest earnings um and the actuarial studies that she mentioned folks leaving the system earlier and the city's contribution staying with the with the city you know those kinds of things offset our cost and to be moderating just above ten percent is really good compared to our prior cities um there's been other cities that I've been associated with where it's closer to twenty percent and that's because there's not as many employees and they're just not adding employees so that means the employees that are left and are paying for all the retirees that have gone before them they're old much older systems than ours are so um we're we're in a really good shape when it comes to our pension.
And overall um so this is reported in our cap for each year we look at um the percentage that our pension plan is funded so for our um fiscal year twenty seventeen our pension plan is eighty-nine point three percent funded which is also very strong um in comparison to things you hear about you know Detroit or um Houston or you know things like that so um so we're in a strong position there all right.
Is that was that what you just never talked about was that on the slide or is that something you?
No it's not I just wanted to add that I was yeah trying not to put too much.
Just sliding them down I'm like I don't have that slide.
It's right here on my notes.
Yeah okay.
All right um okay I want to highlight um our FTE changes for the year that we're proposing.
FTE?
FTE stands for full-time equivalent um so um that's a common term for employees but anyway full-time employees is what we're looking at um on page sixty-eight of your binder um you'll see the same um graph that is on page seventeen of the slides and let's see I'm sorry sixty-eight um so fifty-eight so full-time employees um is what we're looking at I've highlighted in yellow the departments that um we're looking at changes for um we're gonna talk about each one of those individually on the following slides but just a few things to note here um the column on the left is fiscal year twenty-ten and this is um the budgeted fiscal year twenty-ten FTE level um so for the general fund which at the time included development services um we were at two hundred and sixty employees total and we're proposing for fiscal year nineteen getting back to that two hundred and sixty total level and um so that contemplates adding six positions and and we'll go through these individually but some parks and recreation additions an engineering position and a project manager that we're just considering in the general operations department um let's move on and talk about each one of these individually so page eighteen is looking at um Curville Shriners Park which the detail for that can be found on page forty-four of your binder um so some interesting things to note about Curville Shriners Park are um that that department pays for itself which is really rare and the parks and recreation um side of things um so they actually had excess revenues to the general fund of almost seventy thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty seventeen um our fiscal year twenty-eighteen estimates lower than that but um that's another thing that I'm hoping their revenues will come in a little stronger but you know if the weather's really bad in the summer or something like that you know it's gonna be fairly volatile um but we are proposing in fiscal year nineteen the um small rate increases like the two to five dollar kind of stuff that we talked about previously um and we're also proposing adding an additional park ranger position um so we're looking at you know we just have a lot of everyday cleanup um after visitors are at the park that we're having a hard time managing um with the park rangers that we have currently um so we're looking at adding that park uh ranger position we're also looking at reorganizing the staff a little bit so that the Curville Shriners Park Maintenance would um be falling under the Parks Maintenance Division from a personnel management standpoint um EA or Ashley anything y'all would like to add?
So in regards to the reorganization we are anticipating a retirement with that uh we would that's when that divisional shift would change uh under the park maintenance uh element uh we would be replacing the current superintendent there uh with a more line-level position because that is again what you mean it's a little bit of a misnomer to call it park ranger.
I was gonna guess.
Uh yeah in in reality those folks are maintenance folks uh they do a lot of janitorial duties so uh we just need more boots on the ground quite frankly to keep up with the crowds uh which is evident uh via the the revenues that have been coming in so um all of those are you know somewhat contingent upon uh you know that retirement occurring but that is what we're contemplating at this time.
All right um moving on to page nineteen of the slideshow which gets us to the Curville Sports Complex and the detail for that is on page forty-nine of your binder um so we're looking at a request of two additional maintenance worker positions to help with the maintenance of the hundred and four acre complex that would bring the total staffing at um Curville Sports Complex to six and with those um two new positions we're still actually anticipating a reduction in the operating budget for the year um and that's due to the change to reuse water so you know obviously we'll we'll have a large savings on the utility side um when we have a whole year of reuse water um looking at the staffing needs so they've done an analysis of you know how many man-hours it takes just to mow maintain clean that kind of thing um and come and they've come up with um this you know thirteen thousand man-hours staff hours um the equivalent of six point five full-time employees needed to maintain um the Curville Sports Complex um the activity's been really strong out there not including the DBAT side of things we've already um the city has already helped with twelve tournaments um a hundred and eighty-five teams on the baseball softball side on the soccer side and we have four leagues going eighty-eight teams uh EA or Ashley anything to add there?
Um well just again you know it's just sort of a partial year uh for this fiscal year um we've got a much better idea of what we anticipate the load to be uh going into a full operational year uh next year uh as well as uh you know we've got a better idea of what water usage is certainly as we go through the summer months but uh reuse just now coming online uh in the summer timeframe so having a full year of that certainly helps us uh from our operational budget standpoint.
Do we have an idea of what DBAT's numbers are?
I don't specifically have information on that but.
No which?
Like how many tournaments it says this doesn't include theirs the twelve tournaments doesn't include DBAT?
Actually I think you've got some additional detail.
She was referring to your actual needs of this one.
Aren't they supposed to host twenty tournaments or?
We we track their pursuant to their agreement with us we track their tournaments.
Not their leagues.
I I think I misspoke on that I think I said tournaments but it's leagues that it doesn't include.
Well it says here twelve tournaments so is that DBAT the DBAT's hosted twelve tournaments?
Yes.
Okay.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Yes twelve tournaments. They've had a few not make but those aren't counted in the twelve they've had twelve tournaments make so far and they have one scheduled for every weekend through the end of the summer.
Okay. Is it on the on the staffing needs wha- what did we do that we kind of miscalculated on the needs of staffing at the sports complex but what changed as far as?
Wasn't really a miscalculation it's it's always been contemplated uh my understanding uh is that it it was kind of a soft startup uh and that there would be you know additional staffing uh enhancements uh made as the facility was fully coming online and and knowing what the full operational responsibilities were and I think we talked about that last summer when we talked about you know we're gonna start with four we're gonna see how it goes we're gonna you know take a good run at it and then we're gonna come back uh to council this year and tell you you know what it what it's really gonna take.
How is it looking in in terms of expenditures and revenue?
We don't make anything on it do we?
We have fifteen thousand dollars budgeted in Curville um sports complex related revenue for fiscal year nineteen um which is um on the soccer side um for league fees and field rental um so that's that piece of it.
We haven't really seen a trend yet on the uh DBAT side we we do get a percentage of concession sales uh but in terms of any rentals uh we don't we don't get that for two years and then only after that if they don't make meet certain numbers in terms of the number of tournaments they bring in so you know it's not it's not a lot of revenue directly um and the idea and you heard uh council member vocal bringing it up earlier about you know so can we track sales tax and what's happening there and and maybe make create some nexus between when the tournaments are occurring and what our sales taxes doing?
The occupancy tax um certainly we're seeing some increases there that we're trying to see what kind of correlation there may be with um tournaments.
The past two months I guess was the sales taxes going up can you tell that it is due to tournaments or is it?
I can't tell I can uh I can see categories that are going up um so definitely um retail is up which that's our largest sales tax category so that's a good one to be up um food services is up I would think that that would correspond but I you know can't say for sure this person ate at Chick-fil-A or whatever um and then there's some categories that are up like manufacturing that's related to James Avery um so that's not related to the sports complex um but definitely categories that would be related to the sports complex like retail and food services we have seen increases in can't say for sure that it's sports complex driven but we are seeing increases.
We're also working with Charlie McElvein to better track what what the teams are doing in terms of where they're staying and how many uh so that we can better understand that.
Well also along along the lines of the the tournaments and the revenue that we may or may not receive out of it um the way this is presented on the slide um uh makes it seem like it's it's the team count that's gonna matter but their contract I'm pretty sure says the teams don't count unless they're a part of a tournament that had twenty teams in them so if they had a tournament that had like say they had twenty tournaments with sixteen teams in each one none of those actually count towards their reduced rent as far as I can tell.
After year two.
Right.
And if there's twelve tournaments with twenty teams that would be?
Yeah I mean so so this this presentation of hundred and eighty-five teams twelve tournaments they really only I think out of those twelve had two that were over twenty so it.
Yeah and I wasn't trying to make a point about what potential DBAT revenue might be after the two years I just I wanted to give you some idea of what activity level is currently.
Yeah my concern is the DBAT make sure the DBAT understands that.
Okay.
So anyways.
All right um let's see moving on to page twenty um and this corresponds to page fifty-one detail in your binder so we have a new department um that we're creating and that new department is called Community Events and this um this goes along with Councilman um Sigerman's question previously about um the different events um so we you know we definitely recognize that um the tourism industry is very important for Curville and that's something that's been highlighted in Curville twenty fifty as well um also just you know um events for our community to bring our community to our parks um so we're looking at breaking out a department um to specifically highlight all the events that we're doing for the community and some of the things are things uh some of the things in that department are events that we already have and you'll see those listed on page fifty-one you know like the Fourth of July um the holiday parade family fright night movies in the park you know some of those events that we already have we definitely plan to continue um but we also want to look at expanding events in um twenty nineteen so some of our ideas for that are an expanded concert series which we're doing some trials on this summer um something called River Fest and something called River Trail Christmas Lights uh any y'all have anything that you want to add specifically about those events these are all just kind of concepts at this point we don't specifically have details on it but.
Well there's there's been some preliminary planning on all this and and we heard from the council and also through Curville twenty fifty that we need to have more programming in our parks wonderful facilities um and this isn't just about our residents but also tourism and so River Fest is intended to be a another flagship event where I think we were talking about in the fall um having uh something associated with the water and uh and you know bands and so forth and maybe starting out with maybe a one-day uh half-a-day or something like that and then growing the event uh so that's what the intention here is to do more programming in our parks uh for the community but also uh for tourism.
Yeah certainly we know things like the Fourth of July um fireworks and concert attract a lot of out-of-town visitors um and looking at some of these more flagship events that would do so as well um so we're contemplating adding a position that would be called something like a tourism and event coordinator and that person would you know focus on this expanded um event um calendar and we're looking at um partially funding that uh position through hotel occupancy tax revenues so hotel occupancy tax um you know that money can be used for things that promote tourism so these would you know specifically we'd be focusing on things bringing people into the community and and new events marketing um sports opportunities uh those kind of things um to uh to the point about the hotel occupancy tax um so through May of um twenty eighteen our hotel occupancy tax was up eight percent over um over the same time period in twenty seventeen um the month of May itself which relates to April stays so there's just a one-month lag on that occupancy tax was up eighteen percent compared to um May of twenty seventeen um look we you know with that we can't see it down to the day but we can see it by property and um you know it's one thing that's interesting is it's not just that Yogi Bear has expanded and their revenues are going up it's um we're seeing increases at all of our properties and you know properties along um Sydney Baker close to the sports complex things like that we're seeing increases in their hotel occupancy tax and then um like Mr. McDaniel talked about we're working with um Charlie McElvein to see what kind of tracking we might be able to um get through the hotels but it'd probably be you know kind of a voluntary um tracking when they're checking people in if they could specifically um state whether they're there for a sports complex related event that kind of thing all right and just to note occupancy tax it's um seven percent of the stay is the city portion of the hotel occupancy tax and then six percent is the state portion of the occupancy tax all right moving on to page twenty-one um and that corresponds to page fifty-two and fifty-seven in your binder um these are uh the last two additional positions um one would be in engineering we're looking at a new We're looking at a new construction inspector position, and that position would focus specifically on public infrastructure inspections with the idea of allowing other engineering personnel to more efficiently assist with development services plan reviews, trying to make that process more streamlined. So this isn't specifically a development services position, but, but it would kind of allow some reconfiguration in the engineering department to assist development services more efficiently. On the general operations side, so this is, this is just in a department called General Operations. We're looking at a project manager position, and that project manager would have responsibilities over the Main Street program, economic development support, and workforce housing initiatives. So obviously, those are, you know, Curville 2050 action items. And we've asked EIC and presented to them yesterday in their budget discussions to fund thirty thousand dollars of that position.
It's 40%?
It's a little over 40, it's like 45% of that position.
Is that part of the extra? Like you turned their admin fee into 180,000, that's part of that?
Yeah, so we did the calculation on kind of cost recovery of our services, and then we added on that new position. And so, you know, this is things like the RFP on the 534 property for housing initiatives, or it's working some deals in terms of the downtown and redevelopment in the downtown and, and what might come out of a creation of a TURs and individual properties, getting a good inventory of retail properties as we really begin more aggressively looking at retail opportunities pursuant to the new, the recent retail coach study. Because we really haven't done anything with that since we last presented, and so we just don't have enough horsepower, quite frankly, to do a lot of that in-house, and this position would, would help to do a lot of that reporting directly to me.
Is it, I mean, it sounds, in that description, it sounds like a pretty kind of broad knowledge position. Is that a reasonable thing to find in a person?
It is. I think this would be an ideal job for somebody that's, that's had, maybe they were assistant to the city manager in another city or something of that nature, and they're, they've got some economic development background, and they want to take that next step in their career. Or it could be somebody that's local that wants to change a pace, you know, somebody that's in real estate, you know, that kind of thing.
You would assume some formal training in project management, right?
They would have, you know, probably a college education and with some training, yes, experience, on-the-job training, yes, experience. And then, of course, we also have in-house through City University, project management training.
And to Mr. Rudy's point, what we, we had a budget discussion with EIC yesterday, and so EIC pays the general fund an administrative fee, and that, that fee's been at a hundred thousand dollars since 2012. We did an analysis of how many hours are being spent by each department and came up with, we're actually spending more like 172,000 dollars worth of our staff time. We've proposed increasing their administrative fee to 150,000 dollars, and then in addition to that would be this 30,000 dollars for this position, bringing it to 180,000. All right, moving on to Development Services. So this is slide 22 and pages 59 to 65 in your book. As we previously mentioned, so Development Services, we'd like to break them out into their own fund, and we think that this will provide focus on their improvements, their changes, and just enhance transparency, especially with the developer community. The departments that would be included in that fund are planning, building services, and code compliance, so Drew's area. In 2019, we're looking at some large initiatives, so 79,000 dollars for new development services software, 300,000 dollars for a code rewrite. Drew and his team are also doing an extensive study right now on our fees, looking at, you know, can we simplify our fee structure that's pretty complicated on the building side? And making sure that we have equity with comparison cities. I know that they are spending a lot of time talking to the interested parties, developer groups, that kind of thing, to make sure, you know, we come up with something that they're, they're a part of and have input into. And Drew, do you want to talk about that some?
Yeah, we've been working with a group of development stakeholders, discussing a lot of the functions that Development Services does currently, where we have some room for improvement, whether it's the Development Review Committee, our plan review process, which is coincides with one of the lean Six Sigma process, projects, and of course, the fee review and several other projects with their, their input and internal staff input.
You have another meeting coming up with them?
Yes, Thursday.
Okay.
Yes, and we see that, you know, this is a process that will take some time to implement. So for 2019, we're looking at leaving the fee structure as is, and it would be 2020 likely before we come back with a revision on, you know, how things are structured over there fee-wise. And then, like Drew mentioned, you know, they have an ongoing lean Six Sigma project around improving process efficiency.
On that, so the overall, in 19, that Development Services expense thing is quite a bit higher. Is that just because all of that software rolled into this?
It's this 379,000 dollars, yes. And we're looking at transferring that amount of money to the Capital Projects Fund because we don't know that that will all be wrapped up and done within one fiscal year. And so if we, if we make it into a project, we, we budget for that on a project basis, and it can overlap fiscal years.
And what's, what's the benefit to doing this as opposed to just a department? It's kind of isolated. I mean, why have a separate fund?
You want to speak to that? Okay.
Well, it's what you mentioned earlier. It's providing more of a focus on what we're doing with Development Services as a separate department, and it's got a lot of moving pieces. When it's buried in general fund, it's really kind of hard for people to understand how we fund this service. And then also, the, the cost of the improvements. For example, you have all these improvements laid out that she just went through just toward putting that, that many resources toward Development Services to improve what we have. Development Services is also kind of an up and down in many, in terms of activity. So depending upon what the economy's doing, could not be, you know, could be not much going on, and next year, a whole lot going on. And so it's really trying to isolate that fund, separate from your general fund, to monitor it and more closely, there's more accountability around the improvements that we mentioned, but also, you know, how we're spending our money.
So, so other cities are doing this with their Development Services? Because like, what would be, well, one downside from, from my standpoint is, I mean, we, we say it's more transparent, it actually becomes a little more difficult in some ways to keep track of its relationship to the other items in the, in the budget. And that's, that's my fear. But so, so other cities, I mean, what are cities as an example that, that do this? Because I, I'd kind of like to find out what they see as downsides to it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if they still do it, but all the way back to my first job in Denton, when I was budget officer there, they, they did that. Created this fund when I was, I believe, in, in Lake Jackson, and then Tyler, and Dallas has a separate Development Services Fund. So it's, it's common in the industry because developers really want to, to know how the money's being spent and what improvements are being made in terms of process. And so, you know, that's how you do that. You isolate it, and there's kind of a laser microscope on the way, you know, what you're doing and the progress that you're making. So it's pretty common in the industry. It's not an enterprise fund, but it, but it, it acts like one.
So it's, it's not, it's not technically the same as a golf fund?
No.
No, it's not. It would, like, for financial reporting purposes for the CAFR, it would still be combined back with the general fund, maybe in the general fund column of the CAFR.
Okay, so all, all our reporting is, it's gonna be lumped in?
For the CAFR, it will be lumped in with the general fund, and it would still will be considered a governmental fund for financial reporting. It won't be an enterprise fund. We do hope though, you know, there's, there's some misconceptions with builders that, like, you know, they're actually providing excess revenue to the general fund, that kind of thing. You know, with this kind of presentation, we can show them, we're not even able to pay for our Development Services departments. You know, this is also not even including any engineering, which, you know, contributes a significant amount of time to Development Services, but like to be able to show them, yeah, general fund is still having to support this function. And then if there are specific improvements, show them that their money is going directly to those specific improvements.
Okay.
You mentioned enterprise fund. Explain the, exactly.
Sure. So we have two. It's your Water and Sewer Fund, and it's your Golf Fund. Water and Sewer Fund is probably the more pure enterprise fund, where it's, it's really operated like a separate business. So all the fees generated go toward provision of, you know, services and all, all the expenditures. And so it's kind of isolated, and with the exception of the transfers that we talked about earlier, to cover your overhead and franchise fee back to general fund. So it's operated as a separate business. The Golf Fund is, is that way as well, although it's got a, you know, it's got a subsidy now of 80,000, which will be growing slightly. But it, it's truly, it's supposed to be an enterprise fund, where all the fees generated off of golf go toward supporting golf. And then you, as a governmental entity, understand and can make policy decisions around how much you want to subsidize that or not.
And also just from an accounting standpoint, and this is in y'all's budget book from last year, but generally accepting accounting principles and governmental accounting standards require different fund types, and there's different basis of accounting depending on what fund type it is, accrual or modified accrual accounting. So those designations also dictate how the accounting is done and how it's presented. But like Mr. McDaniel said, the enterprise is more just traditionally like it's a regular business, and it's accrual, full accrual accounting.
Depreciation.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, and your capital assets are part of your balance sheet, that kind of thing. There's, but, but there's a pretty good discussion in here about specifically what the differences are between the governmental and enterprise funds and how the accounting differs depending on what fund type it is. All right. This brings us to our last slide.
Okay. So we covered a lot of territory, and then this is, as we mentioned in the opening, the unofficial draft. So you'll get a proposed budget at the end of July, and we'll have another chance to discuss all of this, and new funds on, at your July workshop. And then we would invite, you know, each council member to contact myself or Amy, and we can set up a time to review any questions that you might have on any page in the, in the document, and, and hear more from you about what you'd like to see, what you, what you'd like to see removed, what we're missing and so forth. Mr. McDaniel?
Okay. One, one question I really need clarified. During the campaign, I was told that we're coming up to the end of the budget year, and there's a shortfall, but the council has to make it up. Is that true?
Yes, and they delegate that to me.
It does. The fiscal year 19 budget includes the 25 dollars for me staying at the same amount.
Wait, we didn't get, we didn't get a raise?
Well, thankfully, this city is in great financial shape, and we, we do budget conservatively. You know, it's public funds, and we don't want to be in a position where we've got to dip into reserves. We have a fantastic bond rating because of financial practices and policies around fund balance and reserves and, and debt per capita, and a lot of different factors go into that, but we're in pretty good shape.
It's a double A?
Yes.
And tell me again, it's a double A from standard and fourth?
Standard and fourth, okay.
I was gonna volunteer to test the golf course out periodically and bring feedback, you know, to continue progress of the municipal course.
Sure, we're open.
Thank you guys for a lot of work.
Ready to call it a journey?
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.